Meeting is in order. Sandra, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Siriya.
Here.
Mr. Fitzsimmons.
Here.
Mr. Mitchell.
Here.
Ms. Taylor.
Here.
And Mr. Flanagan.
Here.
Do you have a question?
Any comments or revisions, proposed revisions to the agenda?
Chairperson, apparently there is an item that was added to the agenda which was not on the agenda previously that we previewed. I recommend that we approve the agenda, the agenda that we see in front of us.
As revised?
As revised, yes, sir.
Second.
Commission discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous in favor? Agenda is approved. Are there minutes?
September 29.
Work session.
I don't think it's in the hard copy document.
Or not in the hard copy document.
Oh.
But are posted on the website.
The commissioners had read the minutes?
They were in the email attachment. I didn't have any issues.
So you read them? Has everybody had a chance to read them?
Yeah, I move to approve the minutes.
Second.
Discussion? In favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Comments, correspondence from citizens, visitors, and delegations in the audience on items not on the agenda? Seeing nobody present from the public. We'll move on. Any unfinished business from last week? New business. Public hearing, comprehensive plan amendment CPA-001-2023. Mr. Costella.
Hi. Good evening, everybody. So the town recently acquired parcels on the north side of town along James Madison Highway and then the south side of town along Lover's Lane as part of our boundary line adjustment with the county, July 1, 2022. These parcels lack a future land use designation which is needed so we can, if we do get redevelopment or rezoning applications or other such applications, we can have some guidance on whether or not that proposed new development is appropriate. On the screen is just a table showing roughly what the two future land use designations that are being proposed on all of these parcels are. Basically, the main factors in each are the density, the character, and then the underlying zoning. So on the north side of town, as you can see, all of the new proposed, all of the new parcels being recently brought into town are being proposed, employment center, except for the one parcel which is where the community services building is located, and that is shown as mixed-use commercial. Again, those classifications sort of meet the character areas. As you can see, employment center, it's more specialty business, mixed business, more industrial in nature, and then commercial being more sort of central business, neighborhood, commercial, medical offices is also described as being in the commercial future land use designation. So we felt it was appropriate to have the one parcel along that side of Bradford Road still be mixed-use commercial as far as our future land use classification with the rest being classified as employment center. And those are some photos, just sort of identifying, give you a feel of what those current uses look like along the Brandy Road area that was brought into the town. Looking towards the south side of town, there's four, five mixed-use commercial parcels receiving the designation of mixed-use commercial for our future land use, at least that's what's being proposed, and then the rest, employment center. Similarly, you can see on the top left and the bottom right, sort of the character of some of the existing uses within that mixed-use commercial future land use classification, and then the top right and bottom left, more of that sort of industrial feel which would be employment center. So I'm happy to discuss or answer any questions.
Back to, second to the last slide that showed Lover's Lane.
Those? Oh, this one.
Right there, yeah. So the green is mixed-use?
Yeah, the green is mixed-use commercial and then the pink.
Basically, canic crossing and all that. Pal wellness and all that.
That's correct. The medical offices and then the pal wellness would be classified as mixed-use commercial. Again, medical offices, sort of wellness, less sort of industrial feel. And then towards the front over there is the, oh, gosh, the hotel.
You've got VDOT there, you've got the vacant lot in front of it, then you have the vacant lots on the cut-through road as employment centers. Is that just, does it fits where the road is, or?
Well, it's that and it also, the underlying zoning, which I include in your staff report for all of that area is M1, which is one of the factors that I think sort of lends itself to being future classified as employment center. It's already zoned industrial instead of, and just looking at the look and the feel of the existing uses, the uses, like the Kubota dealership is right there, there's other sort of car dealerships that to me felt more like an employment center type future use classification and met with the development trends of that portion of the Lover's Lane area.
Refresh my memory, mixed-use is more restrictive or less restrictive than employment center?
So again, this is, the future land use classification is, would be more restrictive, and you know, the category is mixed-use and commercial. You know, I think really it's mostly commercial, at least that's what's existing, and as noted in the staff report, most of the parcels are already developed. That was one of the criteria for them being included in the town boundary line adjustment. So not many undeveloped parcels, it seems, you know. So the Brandy Road, you know, less landscaping, more industrial type nature, except for potentially that.
Right. I was more intrigued by the Lover's Lane.
Yeah, and then...
It seems if, you know, if there was a, somebody was decide to build townhomes by the, by the VDOT area, by the DMV office, which, so being mixed-use, that would not be allowed.
Well, again, this is, this is a comprehensive plan update, so it'd be the comprehensive plan, not the underlying zoning. So there's nothing permissive in terms of what's being proposed here.
Okay, so it's not, not a give or a take? This is just...
Correct. This just gives...
We're just trying to squeak it into our, our...
This, this gives us guidance. So again, if they were to come in and propose, because as Mr. Costella mentioned, the underlying zoning is industrial in that area, they would have to come through a rezoning if they wanted to propose residential, which gives the commission and ultimately Town Council the chance to review that against it. Again, our land use categories are, it's the mixed-use slash commercial. In this instance, really, it's the commercial that is the appropriate designation, but we don't have a standalone commercial category.
Is this, I've been looking at section 2730 of Article 2, yeah, Article 2, 2730, and it's titled zoning of areas added by annexation boundary line adjustment or otherwise. Is that the section in the article of the UNICODE that's governing this?
No, that's, that's what governed what we, the previous action we did.
Up until, and so you, yeah, sorry.
No, no, when we took it through at the end of last year, remember, we, this, this section that governs that the planning commission must come up with a plan for land that comes into the town through boundary line adjustment.
Right.
And that's what, we followed that essentially, and that was the default one.
Right.
This now is, Sandy...
The next step.
This is essentially the next step in giving it the designation within the comprehensive plan to this particular section.
This is just a stock gap.
Right, and that stock gap, we then made permanent.
Yeah, right.
From a zoning perspective, and now we're giving it a comprehensive plan designation. And here's the particular state code section for you, Mr. Fitzsimmons, up on the screen. This is related to comprehensive plan amendments.
I can read it if you can't see it.
I can read.
Oh, no.
Let's just take a minute if anybody besides me is interested in the governing text.
Body here is Town Council?
Correct. Yes.
So we're making a recommendation to the Town Council.
Yes. So this is a bit of an innovation, putting up pertinent sections of the code as we make decisions, and we'll have a chance to talk about that either during the planning commission time or during the work session next Thursday. And it's important to note that we discussed this at length, was the last meeting or the meeting before that?
We discussed this at the work session at the end of last month.
We didn't have, we didn't...
Last month?
Was this a regular meeting?
Yeah.
I apologize, but yes, we did, we did bring it to, to the commission.
So this is, we've had a chance to deliberate, to discuss, and to think it over, so this is, we're not making a snap decision here. Appreciate your thoroughness in bringing, presenting the key essential details to us Mr. Mitchell?
A question on the same slide that Mr. Flanagan was looking at, near VDOT. On the north side of 29 there, the mixed-use commercial where it abuts the residential, there's park to the one side of it, there's a little bit to the left. Is there an intent for a buffer or screening in that level of zoning that, you know, if somebody wants to put something in there, commercial nature, is there some way that those residences will be protected?
So you're talking about the Laurel Park parcel, is that correct?
Yeah, I guess the, the green one is sort of has a hockey stick on the left.
Right, so that, as far as what's being proposed tonight is just future designations for the new town parcels. As you can see, the underlying zoning in Laurel Park allowed for the residential development that's happening, even though it's in the future land use, it's shown as mixed-use
Other questions for the department? Move to public, the public hearing? Public hearing is open.
No public.
Seeing no members of the public present, no comments from online or other sources, closing the public meeting, the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a motion, please?
Yes, Mr. Siriya, please.
On the comprehensive plan amendment CPA-001-2023, I'd like to recommend that we send this to the Town Council with our recommendation for approval.
My second.
Discussion? We did go over this before in a previous meeting, and I feel like we covered the essential points, and so it seems like everybody's still satisfied.
Yes, sir.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Other business, variance application VT-3766-2022, Riverdale Culpepper LLC.
So this is the one that I apologize to the chairman that I, that I added on there. This came about, we actually discovered it in state code. There's a requirement when the Board of Zoning Appeals receives a variance request that that variance also be shared with the planning commission. There's no action required by the planning commission.
No, okay.
But there is a requirement that it be shared, so the planning commission may send a recommendation if they so choose, or may send a representative to that Board of Zoning Appeals hearing. So the particular case that we provided the information for, I'm happy to give some, some overall information if there's desire, but that is being heard by the Board of Zoning Appeals on Thursday. So if the commission would like to have a brief overview of it, I'm happy to provide it, or if the material is provided, was sufficient, we can leave it at that.
For reference, is this the house that's had the concrete foundation behind it for at least three or four years?
It's the one that's boarded up.
Yeah. Okay, so I know where it is, all right. And it zones C3?
Correct.
But it's non-conforming?
Well, it's a conforming commercial lot. It's a non-conforming if they want to use it for residential purposes, for a single, or duplex in this instance. It had been used for that previously, but because it, they essentially ceased using it for those purposes for a period of greater than two years, it lost that non-conforming In this instance, that was conveyed to the now owners of the property prior to their purchasing of it.
This is the letter from last year, or two years ago, not two years ago?
Right, that was the email that was provided to them.
From you, February 8. Also a determination letter in there as well outlining that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Attorney.
I think the reason why the statute provides for this to be forwarded to the planning commission apart from your ability to make the recommendation is so that you can see if there's any pattern where the same variances come up over and over again, which might call for a change in the ordinance.
So there is an underlying need that's, that's not related to one applicant but is related to land use more generally?
So one thing that might be helpful would be to have a running list of the variance applications where they are, what they're for, to see if there's something missing or not working in the ordinance as a whole.
Just for our audience at home, Martin Siff, our town attorney, is with us virtually by Zoom or Skype today, and we're conferring with him. I would like to have a brief, even just a short overview and summary, just so I can say I know what it's about if somebody asks me.
Certainly. So the property is, as was noted, is zone C3 commercial, and as such, does have an allowed use of two-family residential or duplex use. But it does, in order to have that, have a minimum lot size requirement of 10,000 square feet and a frontage requirement of 80 feet, both of which this particular property does not meet. So for that reason, sort of for development purposes, it would not be allowed to be used for that. However, this property, because it has an existing structure on it that pre-existed our zoning that had been used for residential, it was considered a non-conforming use and was allowed to continue in that manner as long as they continued to use it for the residential purposes. However, this property did stop being used for residential purposes some number of years ago, and we have record of that based on their water utility usage and the utility bills. And so that use stopped or lapsed for a period of greater than two years, which meant that it was no longer viable, or no longer allowed to be considered a non-conforming use. So at that point, the C3 designation meant that it needed to be used for commercial purposes only because they did not have a, for commercial uses, did not have a minimum lot size requirement or a frontage requirement. The applicant subsequently purchased this property and has applied for the variance on the grounds that they don't believe that there is a viable commercial use for the property with its size, the existing structure on it, the fact that it is unable to, to provide onsite parking, again, because of the size of the particular parcel. And so they are making the request to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a variance to reduce the, essentially the standard for this particular lot of the, the frontage requirement as well as the lot size. In order to, for the BZA to grant a variance, there are five conditions that need to be met, and so they'll have to go through that and establish whether or not this particular variance meets those. One of those is that it's not something that is self-imposed, and the applicant is going to have to essentially demonstrate that by purchasing this after being made aware of the fact that it was not able to be used for residential purposes, that this is not self-imposed. But that ultimately will be the discretion of the BZA as to whether or not they choose to grant this variance.
Yeah. Mr. Mitchell?
Well, in your email of February 8, you give a very nice overview, similar to what you just did here, but you also proffer a solution. Was that not acceptable to them, the solution? You basically talk about other ways to configure it to achieve their goals.
They do own multiple properties there. I think they're exploring all the other options before they possibly elect to go that route.
With Mr. Siff's observations of a few moments ago in mind, I don't, I don't recall encountering an application like this either, too. Have such applications been put forth but not brought to our attention?
We have had variances that have gone forward in my time here. They have not been of a nature similar to this. The ones we have had have been more related to the definition of rear yard and the, the ability to place accessory structures in those rear yards. Sometimes, certain lots are configured in such a way that they essentially don't have a rear yard by our definition, and so folks who want to put sheds in have sometimes had difficulties meeting those requirements. So those are the ones that we traditionally have seen. The other one that we, we did see, that we did follow up with, with this group, was the, the case of the Sunbelt site plan on the property that came in from the county where they wished to apply for the variance to essentially be considered under county standards as opposed to town standards because of where they were in the development process.
So in your experience, there's no pattern of applications based on the constraints this particular property is subject to?
No, this, this one is, is very much not one where we have seen a pattern. There's not too many examples, I think, of situations similar to this. Again, it comes down to that definition and that very clear explanation of non-conforming uses and what's necessary to maintain that non-conforming status.
And there's no action required?
No action, it's completely the discretion of the commission if they wish to make a recommendation to the BZA or if they wish to send a representative, but there's no, no obligation to do either.
Just for my own purpose, my own knowledge, so this would not qualify as an R2 lot either?
It's, no, the, the zoning requirements for, across all of our different categories to allow duplex require 80-foot lot width and 10,000 square foot minimum lot size.
Okay.
So even if it were rezoned to that, it would not, not permit it.
What is the lot width and...
It's about 50 feet, I believe.
Okay. Quite a bit smaller.
Mm-hmm.
Purposes of encouraging infill development would, it'd be a good...
Well, it's one where, in looking at it under the, the draft, the proposed new ordinance language, it would be able to be used for residential purposes. Again, the, the proposed language and what this would be proposed to be zoned does have smaller lot size requirements that would allow it to be developed residentially.
Essentially, everything around is residential.
Correct.
So essentially, if they were willing to wait until we enacted our, our new zoning, it would be, it wouldn't be an issue.
They would likely be able to develop in the way...
It would be conforming at that point.
It would be conforming at that point.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's important, important to note, especially for the BZA to be...
You don't need to go through this if you don't want to wait.
But also, it, I guess, would help inform a decision by the BZA as well as, this is, this change is coming, holding them up when, you know, they could, they could agree to this variance and, I mean, it depends on how quickly they want to develop it.
In the future, it won't be non-conforming.
Right.
So they're just, we're letting them having it sooner.
Well, again, that's assuming that the new ordinance is adopted.
Well, yeah, that's right.
Fairly large assumption.
That's true.
There's some criteria that has to be met.
That is true.
I imagine the BZA doesn't have the discretion to waive those, you know, but I don't, not, it's not my area especially.
We've made those, we've made those comments before. It's like, well, we might as well because if we do everything we say we're going to do, it's going to be acceptable.
Any commissioners, do any of the commissioners...
Thank you for the information.
No recommendations? Okay.
Glad to see something happen at that place, though.
Next item, follow-up items, short-term rentals. We've touched on this issue a number of times, partly in, at least partly in anticipation of the zoning statute, the in-process zoning statute revision. Mr. Director?
Yeah, well, essentially, this is a chance for, for larger discussion. We provided you the existing language that is in the code that regulates some aspects of short-term rentals, as well as what's proposed under the new code for short-term rentals, and finally, the memo that's currently issued to folks that come in for a business license related to, to the short-term rentals. But it was a chance really for discussion from the commission. We'd heard the prior comments and had tried to incorporate those into the draft language under the new code, essentially where, where largely it was, the short-term rentals were permitted by right largely if there were the occupants on site. It was more of a conditional use permit if they were not on site. And again, much more flexibility within what are going to be our proposed mixed-use zones, more of our downtown-type zones, but those that are moving towards the more traditional residential suburbs are where there are more hoops for them to go through. But this is also where there was the request that Mr. Krim joined us as well so that we had the opportunity to ask questions of him and get his perspective.
If memory serves, you're responding in part to a specific request for time for discussion, particularly with the benefit of Mr. Siff's expertise.
So again, if there are specific questions, I, I'm happy to answer them. Or as I said, Mr. Krim is here as well to, to answer from a legal perspective.
So I noticed in the draft ordinance that the, under Article 7, conditions for issuance, number four, if a use is located in the WPD, it will apply style of development which will result in the least degradation of the water quality in Lake Pelham, and that is not in the draft ordinance at all.
That is, this is the standard, the standard language that applies to all conditional use permits in the town currently.
Mm-hmm.
And it relates to that, the WPD for, for water quality in Lake Pelham. So I didn't pull the specific language related to conditional use permits.
Okay.
In the draft, I apologize. I was trying to focus specifically on the short-term rental aspect.
Yeah, I jumped into the CUP, my mistake. I was about to say, it should be no degradation of the water.
Right, right. As I said, I wanted to, to include that just because the bed and breakfast tourist home use currently requires that conditional use permit, so just what those standards were.
So in Regulations 27-6.50.2 Regulations C, no more than six adults and their dependents may occupy rooms with a short-term rental. So six adults and dependents or a total of six individual people?
Six adults and their dependents.
They have 12 people.
Or 18?
Yeah.
Or 24?
Depending on how many dependents one has. Depending on how many dependents one has.
Well, there would also be a building code requirement for fifty square feet of bedroom space per person.
That would apply to short-term rentals as defined here.
Where does it say that, Martin?
That's in the building code.
Oh, okay.
The state building code.
Did you start to say something before? When I said this, that would apply to short-term rentals.
I asked where it said that. He said, in the building code.
Yeah, so, but I thought he was starting to answer my question. It's okay.
If it's in Boca as currently adopted and, you know, it's a one-bedroom and a family comes there and brings their dependent children and exceeds that capacity for the fifty-square foot, what then happens?
It's difficult from an enforcement perspective, to be frank. But that would then essentially constitute a building code violation, I would believe, which would then be.
Not only that, but it would also constitute a violation of the special use permit. And the notice of violation could issue all the up to terminating the conditional use permit.
Is there a special use permit associated with this, with the short-term rental?
There are in certain zoning districts.
On?
In the proposed one.
But not here. Here, we only see the zones in which short-term rentals are prohibited. Where there's nothing that's.
Are you looking at our, so you're looking at our proposed one?
This is the draft.
Proposed one that requires the conditional use permit for the bed and breakfast.
Is that not this same one?
Yep. So again, there's the two ways that can be done. It could be the bed and breakfast or it could be the short-term rental. The short-term rentals themselves essentially are traditional Airbnb where you rent out the whole home. Those are completely prohibited within the residential zoning districts, as you can see.
Retired conditional use approval. It's up in the title, yeah, okay.
Right.
Yeah.
But if you wanted to do the onsite where essentially you lived on the site, that could fall under our bed and breakfast category where you could go through the conditional use permit to be able to do that in those more traditional residential categories.
To clarify, I know that Mr. Siriyo has advocated this before that if it's a operating like a bed and breakfast in an R1, they should have a CUP. Is that the statement I'm reading sort of implicit in here?
Yeah, so if it's in one of our traditional residential categories, the three that we have proposed are the rural residential, the suburban residential, the traditional residential. And those are similar to our R1, R2, R3 categories currently, or estate R1 and R2 categories currently. You would not be permitted to do the investment property-type owner-absent rent, full rental of the property. The only way that you could do something along those lines would be the bed and breakfast where you occupied the structure yourself.
Would require a CUP.
And that would require, in those particular districts, a conditional use permit, yes.
Just out of a point of interest on that, there is a bed and breakfast in town where the owner lives next door. Does that, does allow him to do that anymore?
Can I jump in here, please?
Yeah.
Because there was a recent federal Circuit Court of Appeals case out of New Orleans that found that a requirement for the owner to occupy the structure was unconstitutional because it discriminated against out-of-state property owners. So the Fifth Circuit Court of Appeals is not binding in Virginia, but it is certainly instructive. And the bottom line of that case was that if the intent is to make sure that there's somebody responsible at the property, you can require that there be somebody who's the owner's representative onsite or nearby. But requiring them to live there is, was a step too far. So if you look at, for example, Blacksburg's provision for short-term rentals, they require that somebody be within a certain radius and miles that is available at all times and responsible for the operation of the property so that if the police roll up and there's a fight going on or something of that nature, then we can locate somebody who's ultimately responsible for that short-term rental.
Distance would you recommend?
Well, I forget what Blacksburg used, but it was maybe twenty-five miles, don't quote me. That seems pretty reasonable.
That wouldn't cure the problem that, that wouldn't relate to the Fifth Circuit Court of Appeal determination that you just cited because it would still preclude out-of-state.
No, it wouldn't. Depends how close you.
You wouldn't have to be the owner. It could be anybody. It could be the owner's representative.
Okay.
Not only that, you could be on the borderline of the state. Well, it depends where it is.
Okay. Let's see, here, there's, I don't see a distinction here between commercial-style short-term rentals and non-commercial-style short-term rentals. The wording I see here says, "All short-term rentals are subject to the following supplemental regulations." Short-term rentals are prohibited in RR, R S, RT, and PUDs zone.
Well, short-term rentals are somewhat, by their definition, those more commercial ones, more of the investment properties.
Is there a definition section to the proposed statute that would clarify this? Because, you know, there's no distinction here between a short-term rental with the owner present or responsible representative present or within twenty-five miles or a short-term rental, you know, owned by a Chinese company, for all I know.
Well, that's why the.
There's no distinction made here. It's just short-term rentals.
Well, the distinction is the bed and breakfast definition on the prior page. And that was the one where it's essentially a detached house in which a full-time resident and owner-operator. So it's the resident onsite there. That's where we'll have to modify the language based on that circuit court one. But that was the intended distinction there, where essentially you had the onsite presence in those instances.
So the bed and breakfast is distinct from the short-term rental.
Correct.
Short-term rental is not allowed in any circumstances in these identified zones. But the bed and breakfast may be with a conditional use permit.
Correct.
Question on a CUP that a neighborhood is established and a resident decides they want to change the use, they go through the CUP, and that's granted. They've got an operating B and B in what heretofore was a R2 district. How do the neighbors in that scenario interact with that business? I mean, how are they then aware of if there's a representative up to twenty-five miles away and there's issues going on? Is that, you know, neighbors being neighbors? Do, does the business reach out and say, hey, come over, I'm doing a welcome house. I want to introduce you to our team, our staff, and what we're doing? Is that beholden on them? Is it a list that somebody can say, man, whoever's over there is playing the drums so loud we can't sleep? You know, I've called the cops. It's not getting fixed. I want to talk to somebody. Is that somebody the town maintains? So I guess, is it, is it the business or is it the town that maintains how to access a remedy?
There's flexibility, frankly. A conditional use permit is one in which the town can impose conditions to ensure that what is developed and how the property is utilized does not adversely impact the adjoining properties. So.
Would you also have a contact listed on the conditional use permit?
You certainly could have, could require that there be posted at the door or posted somewhere that's viewable from the public, you know, contact information for a responsible party. That would be at the discretion of the Planning Commission and Town Council if they wanted to establish, and I would suggest that we essentially outline the policy, what the expectations would be. But the other thing to bear in mind is that state code allows a locality to set up a registry of short-term rentals and can have essentially triggers where people can be, have themselves removed from that registry and be ineligible to use it for a short-term rental if there are multiple violations or multiple complaints against a particular property. And so we actually have language that follows the state code guidelines in here. So if you have those perpetual violators that are being bad neighbors within a neighborhood, they can lose their ability to essentially be on that registry and to be able to operate as a short-term rental.
After four, I think, wasn't it four violations of?
Paragraph G here says, "Properties with four or more violations of state and local laws, ordinances, et cetera."
I think that information certainly should be available. And wouldn't it also be available since they're required to have a business license? Wouldn't that information already be warehoused there somewhere as well?
Yeah, the town would have it, but, you know, I think this was more to, you know, at nine o'clock at night, if there's an issue going on, you know, you can call the town offices, but you're not going to get a response at that time. So potentially having a more direct ability to reach out to someone who's able to be responsive in real time.
Twenty-five miles is different than owner-occupied.
Oh, for certain. But if the owner occupant is out somewhere dining.
Yep, in another state.
Well, we could, you know, as a matter of fact, make that one of the conditions somehow that a list has to be provided to neighbors or however we want to do it. We could, I mean, that's just something that, for everyone that comes before us, if we have a sort of a blanket condition that you have to have this and provide this, then that should sort of cut down on any issues.
They could send a mailing to adjacent properties on an annual basis with contact info or something along those lines.
I think it should be at least posted. I mean, you're going to want your information out there if you want people to rent it.
Right.
You know, call Bob or whatever.
And so too, with the occupants. I mean, if they're there and there's a household issue, they're going to want somebody to be responsive to it. You know, they're renting and garbage disposal doesn't work. They want to be able to reach somebody.
So how does this, what's the walkover from the current restriction, which says bed and breakfasts can be permitted in R2 and R3? I'm going to ignore PUD for now, but R2 and R3, but not R1. I'm still not completely conversant in the planned new zoning coding, so. This seems to say bed and breakfasts will be allowed under conditional, oh, no, they will not be allowed?
No, bed and breakfasts with a conditional use permit could go into those.
Into RR, R S, and RT.
Correct, which would include the equivalent of current R1.
What's the filter or screening? I mean, what if everybody, you know, in the neighborhood, ten people decided they wanted to run, do Airbnb, not Airbnb, but bed and breakfasts? What's, I mean, is there any, is there a selection criteria for the?
Well, again, that's the discretion of the Planning Commission and the Town Council because that conditional use permit is a public hearing process.
So there might be a scramble to be the first one in there in the neighborhood with, to get a conditional use permit. What's the benefit of having eligibility for bed and breakfasts in residential neighborhoods? I don't understand why that's even a.
We, there are.
Right now, they're not allowed, and we're proposing to allow them. What's the?
In the R1, because it's allowed in the other ones.
Yeah, it's not allowed in the R1. And now this statute proposes to allow them where hitherto they haven't been allowed. What's the justification for that? Has there been a clamoring among residential R1 neighborhoods to have bed and breakfasts in their blocks or?
We've not, not heard a clamoring, no. The reasoning is more just that there's not a direct relation in terms of how we've transitioned some of the zoning. It's not as though R1 definitively equals RR in the new one. It's a mix in a gray area.
When that gets, why don't we disallow them from all these areas instead of expanding them into what was formerly R1? Why don't we restrict them out of RR, R S, and RT? I mean, there should be an argument one way or the other. If it's a gray zone, if something has changed, there should be new criteria established or a new justification developed.
You want?
Yes.
Why are you eliminating them in R1? Right now, the Airbnbs are allowed in R1. Why not a B and B in R1?
The Airbnbs are not.
Yeah, they are. They're one across the street from you.
It's not allowed. It's licensed by the town, but it's not allowed by code.
If it's licensed by the town, then it's allowed because we don't address Airbnb, do we, anywhere, I don't think currently.
We don't, we don't have a policy. That's what the purpose of this one is.
And there's several next door to you. There's several that are Airbnb.
And more that want to.
And more that want to, yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely. But why restrict, why restrict it to not have it in R1 when people do that?
My personal, I want to separate a little bit from my personal view and my view as a representative. I see, it seems likely to me that many people who move into a residential neighborhood anticipate that there will be no commercial activity in that neighborhood that's zoned that way. In fact, I have a specific question for the attorney down the road a little bit on this topic. And that's, so if I buy a house in an R1-zoned area and suddenly there's commercial activity in there, I feel, I'm apt to feel that the town has misrepresented it in some way or that I've lost some of the value I thought I was acquiring when I paid for my house.
I understand. Just a question of, if somebody buys a house in your neighborhood and they rent it out, is that a commercial activity?
That's, that's an area for discussion. I think if somebody is residing.
You can't stop people from renting it out in R1. If I own a house in R1, I can certainly rent it out.
Yeah, and take the other side of that argument. I'd say, I'd say it's, that's, I don't know if gray is the right word, but it seems to me if you were contemplating a residence over a lengthy period of time that's functionally equivalent to somebody buying a house, you know, they're a long-term resident in the R1, they're residents in the residential neighborhood.
So you're going to discriminate between long-term.
Do you think that the long-term residence is equivalent to a bed and breakfast with people?
I don't see a problem with it.
You think it's the same thing?
No, I don't think it's the same thing. It's different, of course. But I don't see why we should discriminate against the short-term rental. Say, I want to rent for six months. Where do you put that point?
That's, that's a valid point for discussion. And I think that's one of the purposes of having a revision processes like this that you can pin down where you think the line lies.
Sure, I understand.
Well, if I may interject, just on both the points. Right now, the line we have drawn is ninety days is essentially the differentiation between short-term versus long-term. And the reason why, Mr. Simmons, that we had looked to do as permitted with a conditional use permit is that when we looked at all of the different properties, there were some within the RR, proposed RR district, which is the least dense residential, that could well be suited for a bed and breakfast type use. While many of them would not be, are in more of traditional neighborhoods, there were some that were more isolated, less likely to impact neighbors. And so this provided them an option. Again, if the commission and ultimately Town Council feels that it's not appropriate to have a bed and breakfast in a traditional, you know, more conventional residential subdivision, they have the ability to deny that with the conditional use permit process.
Okay, just first to respond to your point of before, I would say, I would turn the question around and say, why is, so a ninety-degree rental may not be a commercial activity, but are you saying that a bed and breakfast is not a commercial activity? I would say unambiguously, it is.
No, you said that you shouldn't allow commercial activity in a residential area. I don't, I don't agree.
Yeah.
I don't agree with that.
Yeah, well, we have a reason, people may disagree.
Yeah, I understand.
I feel honored to be in reasonable disagreement with you. But, I mean, to me, it's literally contradictory, residential, commercial. Zoning for residential dwellings, zoning for commercial activity or mixed use, mixed use, for example.
You look at a bed and breakfast, and usually they're probably one of the better-looking houses in the whole neighborhood because they have to be in order to be able to sell the rooms.
Well, then why don't we just have well-kept businesses completely, thoroughly intermixed with our residential neighborhoods?
We do. We do downtown Davis Street.
That's not an R1.
Yeah, that's not an R's residential.
It's not residential, no.
Yeah, which, so. So we have different, diversity of use is beneficial, and we'll come up with better decisions on this. And I don't want to make this a. And I, I don't want to make this a, like, colloquy between John and me, so.
What the situation you run into, Airbnbs are allowed in R one. B and Bs are not.
I would, I would say, well, go ahead.
Maybe council can clarify that for us, is that, you know, with a CUP, a, a bed and breakfast would be allowed in an R one. But is an Airbnb granted that same privilege in an R one?
But to his point, he says it shouldn't be.
But that, but, but currently, you know, it's, there's not a law there to prevent it. And that's what we're looking at, is putting some guidelines around it. To Mr. Fitzsimmons' point, that if someone has made an investment in a neighborhood and they've made an expectation that they're going to live out their days there and suddenly it's no longer residential, they've got, you know, a number of commercial entities with people coming and going, checking in, checking out, it changes the character of the neighborhood. And those things should have a CUP so that the, you know, residents have a chance to comment on it.
Just a point of clarity, Mr. Mitchell, the, the bed and breakfast is not permitted at all even with the CUP currently in R one.
Okay.
And that's where we, we, we run into that a little bit of difficulty because the, the Airbnb where someone rents out the entirety of their house, entirety of their dwelling is not covered, not described in any way in our current code. Where they're renting out a portion, we do have language that speaks to it. But where they rent out the entirety of it, we're lacking in, in ways to, to regulate that under our current code. It was not contemplated when it was, when it was drafted.
Mr. Chairman, if I might stick my floor in here, you're talking a number of the policy issues that have perplexed a lot of governing bodies and planning commissions, but you've not touched on one of them, which is the preservation of housing for local folks who need to work in the area. The growth of rental units through Airbnb and Burbo has resulted in a palpable decline in the amount of housing that's available and therefore driven up the cost because the supply has gone down. So to the extent that you want to make housing available on an affordable basis to folks living in the area, then it makes some sense to restrict the number of, of such units. City of Wilmington, North Carolina tried to have a lottery for people. One of you touched on this issue of how do you decide how many is too many? And that got struck down for different reasons. It wasn't a lottery, it was a problem, there was a state statute that the city had not complied with, but there are a number of issues that people have tried to wrestle with. And, you know, with the neighborhood character issue, the question is, you know, how many is too many? Do you want to have a distance requirement? You can certainly do that. You could say if there's already an Airbnb or, or short-term rental on, you know, on one block, you can't have anymore on that block, or you have to have seven hundred and fifty linear feet from door to door to the next one or something like that. That does create kind of a, a land rush for people who want to establish their SUPs or their, if it's not an SUP, then to get a permit.
That's an excellent point. Thank you, Mr. Fitzsimmons. Brief interruption. This is set up so that our viewers at home can hear Mr. Fitzsimmons.
It's tied into the microphone as well.
All right, okay. John, Mr. Sirianni.
Mr. Hopwell made a, a couple of comments about some of the language in the draft being difficult to enforce. And I don't recall exactly, I heard you, I heard you say it, but I wasn't sure of what you were saying it in reference to.
I'm sorry, that was more related to our current code language.
Because I was, I was getting ready to say, if it's not enforceable, it shouldn't be in there.
Right.
And like Mr. Sirianni, I, I kind of think that bed breakfast would be welcome in, in R one, especially in some of these rural, in the rural estates. You've got these old grandiose homes that, you know, are big and large and they have nice grounds and they're sample parking and it's, you know, it may be better than, you know, having it crammed into little houses that, you know, where they're just trying to make it work, but.
That sounds like agricultural zoning rather than R one zoning, what you're describing.
Well, there's a house just down here on, by far gone, you know, they've got that large house, that large lot.
Oh, yeah, okay.
And it's like, you know, they've really spruced it up.
It is a bed and breakfast existing, right?
Uh, no, it's not.
To Mr. Krim's point that if there's a number of people who suddenly want to do that for good and valid economic reasons, it limits the number of apartments and other dwellings and it's giving it to people who are visiting the area.
Right.
It also stifles the ability for somebody to build a hotel or something of that nature. So you're losing the potential employment center that would have otherwise created. If there's that much demand for people to stay overnight in Culpeper, somebody is going to say, hey, let's redevelop, you know, the old skating site and turn that into a hotel and make that a common location for people instead of scattering them everywhere and giving up that, that space.
I guess it all depends on your audience.
I would, I'm also, I'm bothered by the fact, I mean, the whole premise of land use planning is that we designate, we think it's advantageous, in analogy, the way we plan out a house, we say the bathroom is here, the kitchen is over here, the living room is here, the bedrooms are up there. We don't, there are certain things that we find advantageous to the, the family community to put separately from each other or to put close together. And by analogy, the locality like Culpeper, when it's planning the use of its land, the whole premise is that it's advantageous to the community to, to organize land so that certain functions are, take place in certain specified areas. Why have a mixed-use designation, zoning designation if your R one is mixed-use? Because you can do commercial activity in it. I mean, it just seems to me to contradict the whole logic and, and behind land use planning.
If I were a lawyer.
Chairman, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I'm going to have to drop off in a couple of minutes for another meeting. Was there anything else that I could contribute to this discussion?
I had a specific question. Can I jump line here or does anybody else?
Go for it.
So, and I'm not trying to relitigate anything, I'm just trying to understand something. We discussed a case recently in which a commercial license had been issued to an owner in a residential neighborhood. And my question is, does that expose the town to any sort of litigation risks? Because somebody, a resident in that area could, and I'm, this is completely hypothetical, I'm not saying anything like this is going to happen, but could say, you've taken away the value of my property. Town, you misled me, town of Culpeper, you misled me. You said this was R one residential only. I moved in here and then you issued a commercial license in this residential area and have therefore caused the value of my property to depreciate. Is there any exposure to the town through that sort of prima facie contradictory action?
There shouldn't be. I mean, anybody can sue anybody at any time for any reason. But if you're going to have a meritorious claim, you would need to show that the town's actions were either beyond the scope of its authority under the state law or they're somehow arbitrary and capricious. And zoning is always about drawing lines. I mean, it's about, what's the difference between having a home business that is, you know, all I do is get mail and send mail versus a home business where people come to my house and I cut their hair? You know, those, do you draw a line there or do you allow the person to cut the hair but you don't allow some other kind of home commercial activity? It's, it's a, it's a line drawing exercise every time.
But in order not to be arbitrary and capricious, there has to be some underlying policy that sets out the terms under which license, this, commercial licensing can be issued, you know, within, for example, a residential.
It's a fairly debatable standard, you know, is it fairly debatable whether this is consistent with the neighborhood character or not? And it's fairly debatable, then the government wins.
Okay. I'm going to inscribe that. If it's fairly debatable, the government wins.
That's a T-shirt.
Okay, thanks for letting me jump ahead.
I'm sorry. There are businesses in, that I think you would agree could be in a neighborhood, like somebody telemarketing, somebody.
You would never know. You would never know if somebody.
Yeah, you would never know. Or an attorney having his, doing a lot of his work out of the house instead of, out of a downtown business. Or somebody.
Ladies and gentlemen, afraid I am going to have to drop off.
Thank you, Martin.
Thank you, Martin.
Appreciate your participation.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
So you were making a point.
Yeah, would you stop somebody from telemarketing or accepting orders for a company in their, in their house?
That's a very fair question and it's precisely this kind of discussion that we need, I think. And that I think we're, we're doing the right thing by having this kind of discussion well in advance of the moment when we're asked to recommend for or against the, the draft statute. Because I don't know off the top of my head, I have to think it through and I.
Yeah, sure.
Part of the thinking it through is talking it through with each of you, so.
And I will also say, our current standard for home occupations is no additional traffic to the home. And we apply it very strictly. We, we've had to turn people down for that very reason where they, they potentially have a delivery or something along those lines that would come in.
What about client traffic?
Not permitted.
Well, that would seem, I don't want to be beating a dead horse here, but that would seem to be relevant to the Airbnb issue.
Yeah, it probably would, yeah, because there is going to be a little bit more traffic because of that.
But this is not simple and I'm not trying to say flip a switch, I've got the answer. I'm saying the, the whole reason for, for having these discussions now is to give us a chance to think it through and develop a more sophisticated understanding, better insight into the nuances of it.
Well, actually, Mr. Chairman, that's the whole reason why this body exists because you mentioned earlier that the planning and zoning is, you know, it's drawing lines and there's categories and, you know, you know, because when it was, when it's drafted, that's based on the best information that is had at that particular time. Fifteen years ago, bed and breakfast were like, oh, you're kidding me. That's like bottled water and cell phones, that's never going to go anywhere. And now, now we have it, but, you know, people, we don't want to change the zoning every time something changes and that's why we're here, because people bring good ideas to us and say, hey, you know, I really think this fits and here's why I think it fits. We allow them to have their say and we can be swayed one way or another just based on the presentation and the facts and the people on this, on this board or this commission. So it's, it's not that we're always being asked to, to change the rules because we're being asked to think a little bit different than what the rules are right now. I'm going to write that down.
We're going to print up a little pamphlet. Thank you.
Page thirty-seven of our pamphlet.
It didn't easy, that's for sure. Good discussion.
Mr. Mitchell?
With respect to the councilman member here, whatever we get to and whatever you present, it would be wonderful to have another group meeting with them to some of this exchange to go back and forth because I think there might be views there that are looking at one aspect of the changes that are proposed. And we will have had the experience of going through this and maybe having one opinion and being exposed to other ideas and coming around to a different way of thinking. We can give the examples of people we've worked with where a, you know, one business was denied, another one was accepted. I'm thinking of specific examples that we've ruled on, but to help the other members of the council benefit from whatever it is we, as a, a group here, decide, to give them perspective that, you know, we've gone through this, the gyrations, we all have strong opinions and examples. But I'd like a chance for the other council members to throw stones at our arguments and to ask questions and to have an open forum just so that when they go to meet the public and you're meeting the public, that a lot of these ideas are already there. And it doesn't become the loudest voice wins.
Mr. Director, when, when we come to terms with your draft, will that then be forwarded to council or is that just totally in our purview?
No, it, council is the ultimate, because it is a zoning amendment, so they are the, the ones who make the final decision.
We're going to do our best, we're going to give it our best shot and toss it to them and say, here you go.
Correct.
Okay.
If they wish, they can throw in the trash.
But they won't.
They won't, they won't.
And just in terms of what the anticipated schedule and sequencing of that is, we're, we're working, we have a completed draft at the moment. We're working with our GIS folks. We're trying to get the technology right so that property owners are able to relatively easily pull out of an online site essentially what their existing regulations are and what the proposed regulations are so that there's not a whole lot of trying to search and delve into the document because it's, it's a large and relatively complicated document to understand. So our goal is to try and get that finalized. We're going to then roll it out to the public at large to, to, to view and to comment on, take all that feedback and then try and synthesize that into changes. At that stage, before we get to the public hearing process, is when we likely will look to try and reconvene both the planning commission and town council together to hear that, that, the feedback that we've received on it to date and have looked to incorporate into the plan. And then again, there may be additional feedback we receive at the public hearing stage itself. But that's, that's our sequencing that we're, we're looking at.
If I recall correctly, or am I imagining things that we're, when the draft is close to ready, we will go through it sort of piece by piece here, or is that not?
That I was anticipating doing sort of, leading up to in advance of the, the public hearing itself. So once we essentially had received the feedback and incorporated that in.
But we're going to, we're going to take some time to look at it closely, piece by piece? Or, or is it just going to be one meeting, you know, speed, speed read this document?
No, I think with the size and scope of, of what's in here, having it at just one meeting would be.
Not quite on the scale of the comprehensive plan review, but, but it was something a little more thorough than just a one.
To, to be, to be frank, I think that this requires probably closer examination of the comprehensive plan, which is a guiding document versus a regulatory document. So the regulatory, in my mind, while, while I come from a long-range background and the comp plan is, is my.
So it merits some time and we're going to give it some time.
Mr. Chairman, I, I don't recall any significant comments about the, the draft proposal for the short-term rental. Are we good with what's there or did I miss something?
No, we haven't, uh, we have not been specific, we haven't made specific recommendations.
I just didn't know if it was going to come up again in our work session so it could be voted on, you know, action could be taken on it at our, our next regular meeting and would that require a public hearing?
Well, it, it certainly would not require a public hearing because anything that's done at this stage, we're not, it's not being adopted into, to code at this time. This is simply recommendations from the planning commission on, on, on the draft language that we're working on.
Okay.
The public hearing today was unrelated to this.
Right, unrelated to that, this, and so, and this gets rolled into our new zoning.
Correct.
Okay.
We could conceivably, I mean, if we think about this in next week, one of us has an idea or some feedback or some suggested rephrasing. I'm guessing based on experience to date that the director would be open with, to at least listen to our, what we had to say. All right then, anything else on this agenda item? Planning director updates?
We will be looking to have a work session next week. I believe we're going to, to be anticipating a, a rezoning case for council to, or council ultimately to consider, but the commission to consider, that we'll be providing an introduction to next week.
Commission members discussion? I had asked you about, so we, we will look at the sort of the plan, the planning.
I had asked you, uh, about, so, uh, we, we will look at the sort of the plan, the planning, uh, action monitor at, next week at the planning meeting, and I had requested, uh, if that, uh, such items as the comprehensive plan review and the statute review be built into that, rolled into that. Okay, so we're on track with that?
Yep.
All right, and let's just, uh, make sure we all have the same date for next week on Thursday, me most of all.
January twenty-sixth.
Voila, January twenty-sixth. Nine o'clock. Mr. Mitchell, anything? Ms. Taylor?
Everything good.
Siriya?
All good.
Mr. Flanagan?
I can't top myself.
Sorry?
I can't top myself.
One good one.
We should have a little, um, little golden mic award each meeting. Has the pithiest remarks.
I think we'll have to split it this way.
Pithiest marks of the.
Motion for German.
Mr., uh, before you do, I wasn't sure if you wanted to discuss, discuss this now, or if we could do it on Thursday.
I thought it might be more appropriate, we, we've tried it on, and we can talk about it a little bit more at length, whether this is a good idea or not.
Sounds good.
On the planning meeting, plus, I think people are probably getting a little tired now.
Yeah, absolutely.
The quality of discussion is absolutely better, Thursday morning. We have a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.